Blair's not here yet, but I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting into order. So this is the Nottingham Planning Board, Wednesday, June 28th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. I'm gonna call this to order. Before we begin, I'll go around the room and have everybody introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Teresa Bascom.
John Warren.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Shaleen Anderson.
Blair Vey, that's where you sit.
So the first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for case number 23-004, S U B in residences of Port Hill, Smoke Street, and Port Hill Road. This is a continued case, application for Berry Surveying and Engineering requesting a 25-lot open space subdivision. We've heard this case previously, it continued to tonight for a couple of reasons. One was we had sent out some questions to town council, which we've received a response back. And then we're also waiting on engineering review, which also came back, which I don't think... We'll talk about that in a moment, but I don't think we're gonna be getting into too much of the engineering review tonight. So, the first part would be, did everybody get a chance to... Did everybody receive the response from council? And we can go into non-public to review that if anybody would still like to make a motion.
Ed, seat me.
Oh. Point of order, Mr. Davies will be seated and voting tonight for the vacancy vacated by Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
And we'll discuss that again. That brings us back to the... We can go into non-public if anybody would still choose to make a motion on that.
Ed, which one is it with letter?
We don't go into non-public often, so we're a little bit rusty on...
I think it's L. 91A3 something.
Yeah, that sounds right.
I think it's L. John, you should know what it is. John, you should know what it is.
Non-public sessions, RSA 91A colon 3. Non-public sessions, RSA 91A colon 3.
Why are you looking at me? Why are you looking at me? You sat three years on the board too, don't you? You sat three years on the board too, don't you?
Yeah, I know, but you've been doing it more recently. Yeah, I know, but you've been doing it more recently.
Yeah, I know our personnel. Yeah, I know our personnel.
91A3, yep. 91A3, yep.
Okay. Okay. So if anybody would like to make a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91A3, So if anybody would like to make a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91A3, paragraph 2, letter L, which is consideration of legal advice provided by the council either written orally paragraph 2, letter L, which is consideration of legal advice provided by the council either written orally to one or more members of the public body, even where the legal counsel is not present. to one or more members of the public body, even where the legal counsel is not present.
I so move. I so move.
Well, second. Well, second.
With the motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Ms. Anderson to go into non-public. With the motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Ms. Anderson to go into non-public. Is there any further discussion on that? Is there any further discussion on that? It was a roll call vote to enter non-public. It was a roll call vote to enter non-public. So I'll start with Mr. Davies. So I'll start with Mr. Davies.
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Bascom? Mrs. Bascom?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Warren? Mr. Warren?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. McKinnon? Mr. McKinnon?
Yep. Yep.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I am, yes as well, so that motion carries by roll call, 7-0, so we'll do non-public. I am, yes as well, so that motion carries by roll call, 7-0, so we'll do non-public. The way I've done this, I don't know where the select board does it, I just usually go... The way I've done this, I don't know where the select board does it, I just usually go...
We have to, because if you shut off that TV, you might not be able to get it back on. We have to, because if you shut off that TV, you might not be able to get it back on.
Mr. Barry? Mr. Barry?
We'll be back. We'll be back.
Just gonna ask if it was easier if I left. Just gonna ask if it was easier if I left. No, we don't wanna disrupt technologies. No, we don't wanna disrupt technologies.
We're in used office, and then we'll be back in a few moments. We're in used office, and then we'll be back in a few moments.
Technology can wiggle the wires. Technology can wiggle the wires.
Since we walked on the office, I'll ask you a question. Since we walked on the office, I'll ask you a question.
Okay. Okay.
(cough) (cough) So I'm back, Mr. Davis. It's taken by Ms. Mooney to close the non-public session and seal the minutes. We'll do a roll call though.
Yeah, roll call, so.
I'll start on my left, Ms. Anderson?
Um, yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Mr. Veal, yes. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mrs. Bascom?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
That motion carries 7-0 to close the non-public and seal the minutes. All right. So basically, Mr. Barry, so prior meeting, we had voted to send council a question about CUPs, what's the sports authority, there's a question as to kind of the zoning ordinance. Basically, does CUP, can... Is it kinda... Can we grant anything with the CUP in that area, or are we limited by certain sections of it? So that's where that came from, and... So I'll let the board discuss some more, take a vote, but... Basically, in the reading of that section, the way it's currently written, we have Article 4S7F, which is what provides, grants us authority to provide for CUPs. But then under the subsection of 8, that's where it kinda calls out some of the areas that you can mention, like the minimum lot sizes, but doesn't say anything about maximum lot sizes. And there's nothing about frontage, so it seems like we do not have the authority under a CUP for this, meaning it would more likely be a variance. So I think we have a couple of courses of action, and make a motion by the board to see how they want to go with it. Continue. One possibility would be, we act on the CUP at some point, and the board takes a vote on it. Either approving, denying, or denying without prejudice if it's something that we don't have authority to. Danger of us acting on a CUP, if it's not within our authority, appeals to that go to Superior Court, which is a whole different process versus... But if it's not within the CUP, if it's not within our realm, it's still... First, if it's not within the CUP, if it's not within our realm, it's still a zoning, then the relief would be variance. It's still a process, but keeps it within. So we wanted to kind of... Kind of bring you up to speed in that.
So our options are, uh, receive a denial and have to sue you or go to the zoning board, is what you said.
Interpretation.
Right?
Right, so...
Sorry, shouldn't be laughing, but... Well, I mean, that's...
If you were to go to the ZBA route, I guess my suggestion would be instead of us taking action with the CUP, we just withdraw that portion of the application.
Yeah.
Without prejudice and then... Or the board can vote on it. Yeah, we want to give you a chance to speak, um, before we do anything.
I think we also discussed too, we don't... We can also continue the applications.
Right, we don't have to... If you'd like us to make a decision tonight, we can.
If I'd like you to do what?
If you'd like us to make a decision on it tonight, we definitely can. If you prefer to, uh, discuss with the, um, the property owners, the applicants themselves, you know, your clients, then we understand that too. And we could obviously continue that discussion to the... To the next meeting.
Okay, so we had, I want to discuss all the CUPs so I understand which ones you feel you have the authority to grant under the application and which ones you feel you don't. So, um, I think the buffers... I forget what order I wrote them in, but let's take the buffers first. Is that an area that the board has leeway to grant a CUP on?
We did specifically ask about that part, but I believe that is specifically called out in the...
Yeah, eight G permits it.
Alright, I agree. Alright, so then we had...
Eight G, where... What page are you on?
Uh, zoning ordinance, eight thirty-three.
Thirty-five.
Maybe that'd be the old ones. Thirty-six for the new one.
So yes, eight G landscape buffer.
Okay, and then we have a CUP request for, uh, lot sizes that exceed the maximum.
That's... That's an area that is not within... That is not called out within, um, the open space section to allow for, um, lot sizes above the criteria.
And to reference that, eight B, alternative lot sizing only makes reference to minimum lot size. So that was the interpretation.
You're right, that way eight B is written, we can make lots smaller than thirty-five. Smaller. Especially because we... That's called out, there's nowhere that grants, that's called out maximum lot sizes.
But where it says in eight E, that the board encourages applicants to be flexible and then provides guidance for the conditional use permit to be issued per section five. For the purpose of providing the flexibility in the design?
Yeah, so we looked at that and then it brings it back to section five, which is only permitted uses and density. Yeah. So that was a question mark, I think some of us read that and were confused and almost didn't see. There's a question mark on my notes for that, because that doesn't seem like maybe an improper reference, but it's in the ordinance.
Okay, um, and then I think the other was the frontage.
That's the other one, it doesn't seem like we have the authority to grant with the CUP or take action on it.
Okay, so then maximum going over the maximum lot size and having frontages less than a hundred feet would require relief from the zoning board.
Correct.
Under this ordinance. Okay.
It does bring up questions for us to consider, uh, I'm sure we'll talk about this, uh, during our August meeting with... Our joint meeting with those, um, other land use boards and committees, um, that at this point, it's currently written. Correct.
Seems counterintuitive.
I think my... I have more questions as I dive into this every single time. There's, uh, some looping that seems to be going on with...
Yeah.
The ordinance. Even... Even section seven procedural requirements is a little confusing to me as I read it more. Every time I read it, it's one more unclear.
Yeah, I think the more and more you read everything, the goal is to have everything work cohesively and smoothly, but sections are added and amended over time.
Okay, well, uh, I was only here to discuss those items with you tonight, so I don't know if the board needs to make a formal motion, uh, basically that those two items need to be remanded to the ZBA or how the board wants to deal with that issue, but...
We... We can do that, that's why...
Because you're... You're essentially making an administrative decision.
Yeah, so... So what we can do is, yes, we can make a motion, um, we can make a motion regarding whether or not these qualify for CUPs, um, for the board to take action on them. After that motion, depending on how it goes, uh, we can always act on the CUPs tonight or another night. Or depending on that motion, again, there's always the option for an applicant to withdraw a request. Or again, we could continue it to a future date to allow for some additional time. So we can... We can go kind of any direction. I wanted to gauge your... Obviously, no matter what actions the board takes, potentially, except for one, of course, there's going to be a step... Steps that the applicant is required to do, so...
Yeah.
And potential changes to plans or whatever, that's why again, we want to make sure that we had this discussion tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Knowing that that potential exists with timelines and everything else, so, um... Yeah, so I wanted to give you the option to... To indicate if there was a direction you preferred for us to move on this, uh, well, I mean, I know there's... One direction, but, um, we're bringing it back to the board for further discussion.
Well, I think it's fair to say that we could poll the board. You can take polls and I think on those two items, the board would probably poll towards a potential denial. Obviously, no votes have been taken, but that's... I think that's the reason you're offering. The course of action to withdraw at that point.
Well, I... I think the board can... If the board is inclined to determine that you don't have jurisdiction over those two items, then this board by this ordinance and the subdivision regulations gives you administrative authority. You can make the administrative decision that you don't have the authority to grant a conditional use permit and relief can be sought at the ZBA. That's it, and then we either revise our plans or we go to the ZBA.
Right, that's what I think the options are.
Yeah, I think... I think at our meeting, we were starting, I'll have to go back and check the minutes, I think we had accepted the CUP applications as complete. So since we accepted them, do we need to take like a direct action on the CUP, so?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, bring it back to the board. So moved to make any... Have a motion, have any further discussion?
I mean, in the end, it's going to be the same course of action on those two items, so, I mean, I know the board would prefer to take, I think, a vote just to be able to close the loop because we did accept an application that is complete for us to discuss it. So let's see, I just got to get sections, so to the... To that end, I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Which one?
Before Ian makes his motion, and I still have the opportunity to interject.
Yes.
The reason for this is that this then allows the applicant two courses of action with the ZBA, either an appeal of administrative decision or zoning ordinance.
If we take a vote on it.
If you take a vote.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
Right, yeah, appeals of administrative decision part, you're probably more well-versed in that than I am.
Which one do you want?
My problem.
It's these two.
Action on conditional use permit, appeals of that, application appears where it bypasses ZBA, so... Or the other part maybe doesn't, but...
Alright, so, um, with that, I will make a motion that the planning board deny without prejudice the conditional use permits, um, for case number...
Two B three zero zero four.
Two three dash zero four SUB relative to, uh, the requirements under, um, Article four, section S, part eight A, table one, relative to, um, requesting larger than maximum lot sizes and allow frontages less than the minimum required. So a motion to deny without prejudice those two out of the four conditional use permits.
I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Mr. Davies, is there any further discussion on that?
Just a point of order.
Yes, please.
Uh, could. I think the motion needs to state the reason for the denial without prejudice.
Uh, reason being, um, based on legal opinion granted to the board, uh, after a question to legal counsel that we do... The board does not have authority to grant relief from, um... Relief such that maximum lot size can be increased or frontage less than the minimum can be granted.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor to... Of the motion to deny only the portion of the conditional use permit for R of the four, section S, that was eight point two, to permit lots larger than maximum and a lot of frontage less than prescribed, um, only those two specific sections, uh, to deny those, that part of the application without prejudice. With the reason being that planning board does not have the authority with the ZBA under the zoning ordinance. Issue CUPs for that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or, I'm sorry, yeah, all's in favor tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion carries six zero one, and the findings of fact on that would be that the... My understanding of the finding of facts for this, we can append it if anybody has anything else they'd like to add, is that under the current zoning ordinance, Article four, section S, which is open space subdivision authority, um, standards call out, uh, some areas where we can issue conditional use permits, but do not specify that we can grant authority to, or maximum lot size or frontage.
It's based on, and it was probably important, it's based on literal interpretation of the language too, which is important.
Based on the literal interpretation of the language, correct? Is there any additional language for the findings of fact?
I thought that was good.
That's it. But Barry, you are here, we want to honor your time, um, I know you'd originally requested initially a continuance to July twenty-first.
Mm-hmm.
But is there anything else? I know we got some comment back from the interim fire chief about sister and seven forty, it just came in.
We had, yeah, we had a meeting with the fire chief, that's what provoked the email to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so, but you're... You got something from Adam or...
Yep, we had a meeting.
Okay, so there was something about sister in there, uh, and I think it was just that one was sufficient, but different type?
Different type, and they'd like, um, so that it can be more readily used, uh, from a general public standpoint. Uh, they'd like to be able to park two vehicles, um, lengthwise, but also two vehicles side by side, um, which increases life safety in the general area.
Okay, and I think, uh, I think that's pretty much all the other comments we've received. Anything else we have, it's pretty gold time, you've probably added from rotation and stuff, so...
Yep.
So do you think further before we continue?
Nope.
Alright, and the continuance date was July twenty-eighth?
Yep.
Is that the preference?
I'll make a motion that we continue case number twenty-three dash zero zero four SUB to the July, uh, twenty-sixth.
Sorry.
July twenty-sixth meeting at seven PM here in this room.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McKinnon and second by Mrs. Bascom to continue to July twenty-sixth at seven PM. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, uh, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Enjoy the rest tonight.
So next on the agenda, um, it was a pretty light agenda, so I wanted... One of the items was, or something I asked the land use clerk, Alana, to do, that I felt an... I kind of felt the need for when there was a vacancy in that position, was to get an idea of like the flow of that position, you know, some of the duties that are entailed from an actual day-to-day basis, uh, related to applications coming in, questions coming in, the applications coming to the board, the whole process. So I wanted to kind of ideally kind of write it down a little bit so that, um, so the board is aware of all that goes into it as well as to try to make it, uh, a little more seamless if, you know, Alana's on a vacation or anything like that, so that there's a less of a chance for things to be... Provide more continuity. Perfect. So in your... In your packet, you can see something that Alana put together and thinking again, Alana for taking the time to do this, it was on a non-EM land use clerk process and procedures. And I think I'd have, uh, or if it hasn't been, I'd like to share it with the ZBA too, just so that, um... So, because it obviously falls there too, so...
Did you want us just to quickly go through it, see if we had any comments?
Yeah, I think that'd be good, and I can read through it, it's... It's pretty quick, so... So kind of the monthly duties, uh, the way it's broken down, so things that the land use clerk does, kind of recurring, prepares monthly calendar with planning dates including the following, any planning and voting meetings, application deadlines, um, notices of public hearings, the deadline for new materials or revisions to canum cases, final agenda and when that should be posted, uh, notice of decisions and when those need to be posted, so there's timelines on all of these and those are specified on here, which are really helpful. Except, make sure that acceptance of all applications before the monthly deadline, to review applications for completeness, including my application checklist, uh, calculate fee and accept payments in the form of a check, which is then passed on to the bookkeeper, create case number and folder, scan application plans and add to current applications on the town website, create public hearing notice opposed at the town hall, post office, town website, and the union leader newspaper, email and mail application documents to planning board members, email case information to other town departments, including public works, police, fire, building inspector, conservation commission, requesting any comments they would like to include in the meeting. And I think some of these got dropped in the past and then it's great to see those written down. Create a meeting agenda and run it by the, uh, planning board chair or co-chair before sending it out to make sure, basically to make sure it encompasses everything we need. Finalize agenda and post to the town hall, post office, and the town website. Email agenda to all planning board members along with any new information, prepare binders prior to the meeting with agenda and all the new information to be discussed. Set up a meeting with binder, sign and sheet, and any other documents, um, basically. By producing all this for us and it allows us to run very efficiently. Having it broken down like this is super helpful. Attend meeting and making sure to note any important decisions made or requirements needed for continuing cases, email any third parties that planning board like information from, including CMA engineers or engineers, town council, Lake River Advisory Committee, and those are specified, but there's others that at times we request. Create and note regional impact notices and minutes till butters, um, NSR PC when noted, when needed, so basically holds us to all the legal requirements under RSA's. Create and post notices for walkthroughs as needed, so state walks, take minutes and type them up for other sidewalks, um, keep town website updated with all materials related to the case. After the meeting, um, administrator, this, uh, we'll post the video on YouTube site. I'm in it late and right now, currently who... Who does that for us? A minute taker should be, supply at least a draft of the minutes within five business days of the meeting, there's a process for that. Create a notice of decision for any closed cases, email the notice of decision to all planning board members and the... Email the notice of decision to all planning board members and applicant and post it at the town hall, post office, and town website. Move any closed cases from the current applications on the website to completed applications. Follow up on any outstanding items, conditions on continued closed cases. Make sure closed cases are filed with a registered deeds and keep a copy of the plans and documents in the town files, super important. And then annual duties, create an annual meeting calendar for both land use boards to be approved. Assistant preparing and posting zoning amendment, warrant, hour list, be voted on at town meeting. Assistant updating and posting bylaws, regulations, and applications. And I think you succinctly wrote down your duties in, on three pages or less, which is commendable, since I know, again, I built in for just a piece of this. All that all sounds very simple, or not simple, but straightforward, but it's in practice. You know, you add people to it and a lot of emails and communications, and it's a lot to do, so thank you for this and all, all that you do to help keep things running. Does anybody have any questions on this, or see anything that we missed that we'd like called out specifically?
I only, two things. First was, I think I saw you writing it down, just changing walkthroughs to site walks, so there's no, just so there's no confusion, because somebody will be like, we'll think about that for far too long. And then I guess my question is, I, this is great, because I know it was like you stated, if there had been like no seamless transition, no overlap at all, like some people walking into this job would have to go look into RSA's and try and figure out statutory requirements. Is the intent that may, is this maybe gets to the point where, I'll highlight one, say, create new case number and folder. Should there be anything below that that then states actually like, okay, there's, like I, is there an Excel file that you guys? Like, how do you guys keep track of the case numbers, is this just like a Excel file or something that you?
Just there's a pub, like if there's a public folder and it's planning and zoning.
Do you just, you see a folder and you create a new folder?
Yeah, I just, I create a physical folder.
Yeah, okay.
Put the, you know, papers in and stuff, but also a file on the computer as well.
Got you.
Are you asking more, how do you?
Do you want me to?
I was, I was just, yeah, not, you don't have to focus on it now, I'm just thinking is like, next time you do that, I'm just thinking if, if this, to make it even more complete, is like if somebody, like say you or I had to step in to
Okay.
actually process something, that way there's no questions like, alright, there's a file, physical file, electronic file. I mean, a couple of these, like, you could add detail, they're not required, but like if you find that you're have five minutes and you're doing a noticing to union leader, like a lot of times, don't they have like a, it's like a email address that all postings are sent to?
Yeah, I can have detail, I didn't know.
Just because it's like, I think it's worthwhile while we're doing the document, because then it's like a complete document that's almost, has actually, that sounds like to give people more information than they like, but, but for the purpose, I think, of what this is, I think we've never had a document before, we might as well try and be as thorough as possible. But this is a great, great start to kind of see it in this order too, because I always get the, there's a lot of dates to remember, days prior to meetings that I, I would never be able to remember.
Yeah, I tried to, I started out as a flow chart, and it was like, kind of too confusing, and so I just.
It's never truly fully in order, it's all two things at once, then you come back together, then they split, you go back, you know.
You know, I'll second what you said, because I was thinking the same thing, kind of like if we have to get into, if we ever get into a situation which we kind of were before, and we have to step, like one of us has to step in, like kind of a little bit more specifics. And the only other thing that I thought is just a couple of the words where you say, accept all applications.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Process.
Yeah, maybe like process or something like that.
I was thinking that, that did sound right too, because you guys accept.
Yeah, yeah, just kind of stay clear of like the language that we would use in relation to the cases. But yeah, I thought too, it was really good, just a little bit more.
Administrators have the authority to accept, but I believe it's, it's only based on how the cities can do that, the town planners that are on staff and stuff, but it's very limited.
Yeah, I mean, and I get some of these, like review application completeness, same thing, it's, that's just saying.
Have we been paid?
Right.
Yeah, like.
And if the applicant is saying they've supplied these things, or they checked, yes, 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 do we have those things? And make sure that that's actually there, but.
The only other thing I noticed is that zoning board isn't mentioned, where you're like emailing and mailing applications to planning board members, number eight.
Oh, yeah.
It should be zoning along with all those.
Okay, yeah.
Or just put land use boards.
Yeah, you could do that easy enough. And then, talking about being a little more specific, number eight, should it say one week prior to the meeting?
It's worthwhile mentioning. Is the zoning process the same timeline? Is it the same days before and stuff?
Yeah, and then obviously that, so that's the ideal, and then, but as, as things come in, if, you know, if Alana receives some kind of communication and it's less than that, she still can forward it to the board members.
So ideally, one week ahead.
Not really called out in here. So, I don't know how other land use boards necessarily do this. I prefer all communications between the applicant and the town be through the land use clerk or the planner. I do not like them going directly to me, or, and I try never to, I try, I generally do not respond directly back to them. I'll make, I'll have one of these two individuals respond back to them. Obviously, when there was a vacancy, that required some responses, so, and those times I was doing it, I was CCing the land use clerk email, so we could have a file for it, but my preference is, I don't think it can call us out anywhere, but the way I've been doing it is I have all the communication come from one of those two sources.
I think from a legal standpoint, that's also the safer way to do it, especially where these are personal emails. There is a level of separation, I believe.
Yeah.
Information is fed through a middle party, which would be land use clerk.
So, with that said though, there's a lot, there's a lot of communication that goes into the land use clerk's email. I don't know what the email account is, but it, it can be pretty significant.
Cool. I wanted to add a couple things. When you, when you talk about number two, accepting the applications or processing, the worst case, you talk about scanning the application, are, are we still not requiring people to submit digital copies of plans and and all the applications you talked about this?
No, we did, I, I don't, I don't believe that we, I don't tell people to give you a drawn copy. Most of the, it seems like the bigger engineering firms and companies do give me one, but like smaller ones.
Yeah, I think, I can remember that in our, we're buying the applications, we separated site plan to, to request a PDF, I think we did, I think we put it on that.
I thought we did, yeah.
Request a PDF copy as well.
We can always do a reminder as well, because to be honest, there's probably not many firms these days that can't create electronic files or not sending them out to their clients, because not many clients want a hard copy of their application.
We had that woman that did the hand drawing for the.
There's exceptions, yeah.
That one I understand, but if people are doing a site plan, if they're, there's no excuse.
Yeah, they have survey.
Starts as a computer file, they have a way to make, keep it as a computer file, yeah.
So, turn it into a PDF. So, I, you know, I guess if, if it's not going to be required, I think you should feel comfortable, strongly encouraging.
I'm going to stop you for two seconds, okay?
It just gets with the larger set documents, I guess, it takes long.
But you're right, I thought when Kevin was here, we like to try to relieve some of that time.
We did even with Joanna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back then.
Thought we required.
I think it was us pushing for it, and the applicant, basically the land use clerk pushing back and saying, please give us a PDF of this, so we can put it on the town website. I don't know if we ever formalized it anywhere, so it's something that I think, if we haven't formalized it, we probably shouldn't.
Well, especially.
I keep on the application.
If it formalizes the application. Formalizes an entire document.
That's what I mean, I need to go back.
Call the town policy. So, there's that one, and then, um.
Some of the checklist I have.
Right.
On the checklist.
On the application.
On the applications, there's an order put in an email either.
Really?
Write an email? Yes.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, we always need to get an email from whoever's the applicant rep.
Yeah, I try to do that.
Because that's, that, I choose I reach out to.
Have a copy of the?
Um, awesome. There it is. Number twenty-three about notice of decision. Uh, is it, uh, or, my dad in town, or for, the part of the process is, I draft my decision, then I send it to the chair review and sign.
Okay. I.
Do you, do you sign it? Do you just type it up and post it?
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes I learn by.
Well, but yes, but there's no signature on it. I don't know if that's required or not, I would presume not. I'll look into that, see if that's current.
Elena, I have a thought about number fourteen. Thirteen and fourteen, you talk about binders, but don't identify them and, and to whom they are given.
Subdivision though.
You might just make a note that the binders will contain the agenda, updated communications
Okay.
from applicants, abouters, and other things that the planning board is addressing.
Okay.
For each member.
So in the subdivision application, that's what I was just looking at, that's the one I have in front of me, I don't have the, took my site plan and other copies out of my, my folder. That does have an email field for the owner applicant. But maybe we should put it somewhere else, like, you know. One thing, I mean, like, I think they should be doing, the applicant should be doing is at the top, I mean, it's got a case number, project name, and date. Ideally, I think those, I don't know if that's supposed to be us filling those out or them, but just for continuity of like, you lose a page from here somewhere. We know where we're supposed to go. Any other questions or comments on, on this?
Good.
It's good.
No, I thought it was, it was really well done, it's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
About updated and send out.
It's going to be a working document, we're going to always be like, oh, let's add that, or you're going to think of stuff to add, and it'll be a ten-page document.
Yeah.
Which is fine, that's, again, it's like.
Right.
This is not granular, it's, you know, very high level of like this, 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 this. You know, so again, anybody coming into it could look off the dates or whatever.
I think the town administrator will be very happy to see that if they're ever pushed into a situation where they have to fill a position or find a temp person to fill up, if somebody's out for a while, it's, we've never had that.
No, just, just extended vacations, those kind of things.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, in for the minutes, Mr. Moore, let's step away at seven fifty-five PM from the table. That brings us to, the only other thing I had for tonight, I don't think we've received, so, we have a vacancy. I re-reviewed the RSA specific to the planning board. We are, we do have the authority to continue to fill that seat, you know, at per meeting kind of option with an alternate like we did tonight. And then we also have the authority to vote somebody into that seat for the remainder of the year until the next election, so. Have we received any, any requests?
But it is posted on the website, on main page and on both board pages.
Okay. Is there anybody present that, that wanted to, uh, wanted to be considered for that position? I'm not pressuring anybody, I just want to make sure. I thought that was your opinion, but I wanted to make sure. We've got it posted on the town website, we have that posted, as well as a request for alternates for both planning board and ZBA. There actually is an application form for people to fill out if they're interested. I recommend anybody that's interested, considering it, come on in, fill it out, meet with us, have a conversation, and tell why I started on this board. I don't want to scare anybody off, I think it was eleven, almost years ago.
Look where you can get to.
Look where you can get to, yeah. But I started off filling in a seat that was vacated, so. A good chance, and again, the current term would be just for the next year until the next elections take place. Mr. Moore has returned at eight oh four PM. Again, if you're interested or considering it, just please email it or just call it into the land use clerk, and we'll get you on the agenda so that we can, can meet you and.
Good job.
To hold a vote. Public comment, this is the time of night where we leave it open to the public, so we can meet with anybody that's, has a question about planning, zoning ordinances, site plans, and things like that, just not case-specific. So we always welcome people, encourage people to come in here and have conversations with us. This is the proper form for it. There's nobody here, so we'll move on. We have one set of minutes, the minutes of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I wanted to include those in our packet that she mailed to us. I reviewed them, and I actually have zero edits, so.
I have one that I, that I thought I already had sent to you, was line one oh three, change Mr. Dow to Ms. Dow.
You did send me an email.
Yes.
Good catch.
That's the only one I had. Great, great job.
Are you good, Sue? I have it circled, I can't believe I didn't catch that when I went through.
Is there any other comment on these, otherwise that motion would be in order?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second.
That's a motion by Ms. Anderson, and second by Mrs. Bascom to approve the minutes of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Select board, staff board, member updates, we'll go around the room and start Mr. Davies. I have nothing new. Mrs. Bascom?
I attended the SRPC annual meeting. I tried to get on the meeting Thursday, the one that they did by Zoom, the, there was one, I don't remember now what the name of it was, but there was no sound, no sound whatsoever, no matter how I tried. So I bopped off of that, but I did go to the annual meeting, and I know he plans to talk about it, so I won't steal your thunder on it. I did. I, I did talk with many people there about a issue that I need to bring to you all here that's part of the, and I talked to Sue, a zoning board case in regards to the Aquifer district. We have a case that's dealing with the animals, somebody who wants to have some animals within the Aquifer district on Swan. Our ordinance does not define animals, and it limits it to five, so if you're having chickens, five is nowhere near a flock. Do chickens count, or do they not count? Is animals strictly four-legged creatures or not? I've looked it up in, online, I've, and some say that a farm animal includes the fowl, and some say it doesn't. So, that is something we need to take a look at, because the changes and stuff come through here, so. I did have a couple of people at the table I was sitting at during the meeting, and they were going to try and hook me up with someone from UNH Cooperative Extension, but I haven't heard back from that person yet, so I don't know.
You actually have some, to piggyback off that, that's why you sometimes see some towns or cities have policies nowadays strictly for like chickens and.
Roosters.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so like town Scarborough, for example, there's certain zones you cannot have a rooster, but some residential zones you can have a rooster, but that's a good point, because it's like ducks.
Right.
You treat them the same as a chicken.
And then you've got the Canadian geese that come by regardless of what you try and do, so it's kind of like, you know.
Interesting.
They don't care about balance.
Right, no, they don't. Not at all.
I think our SRPC contract is for ZBA as well, right, or is it just planning board?
It's for both.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can reach out to.
They did.
See, okay, if you have it. Normally, so the way a lot of the OSI and HMA meetings I've gone to, and this is probably what you might be referencing, if it's not a defined term in the ordinance, and it goes to court, judges are generally going to look up in the dictionary as to what the definition is to define it. If it's not in RSA, and it's not in zoning, it's not defined, it's going to be whatever the dictionary term, however the dictionary defines that term.
Well, it would depend on which dictionary you go to, because I guess, I Googled it, and I got different answers, which is why I went to them at SRPC, and I'm like, please, give me some guidance. and I got different answers, which is why I went to them as our, and I'm like, please, give me some guidance here. But we do need to define what we want for animals and what the number means when it comes to things like chickens versus pigs versus cows. 'Cause, I mean, seriously, five cows or horses or something is going to create a different layer of impact as opposed to a dozen chickens. So, anyway, that was my, my bit for you guys tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Sue, for coming out with me.
For our list. Added the list for things to discuss.
There's a lot of definitions we're probably missing from this ordinance, but it's, it's a good one to identify.
Mr. Moore?
Um, a couple of quick things. We had a nice meeting with Town Clerk Lori at one of our meetings. This is for everybody in the public. If you haven't registered your dog, do it. Uh, the town has been very lax over the past two years or so due to COVID. Uh, but we are going back to the forces of your dog better be registered or, you know, tell us it's dead or whatever. Uh, because if you don't, coming up, have it done, you'll be a certified letter and then there will be fines and stuff. And it's like seven dollars to register a dog, and if you're over sixty-five, it's like three dollars. Uh, so it's really not a lot of money, but the town does generate. If you look at the town report for two thousand two, the town generated six thousand seven hundred something dollars in dog license fees. So, every bit of fee we get also helps the town, but it's also important because the penalties will be back and increased. And as a board, we are going to go forward in compliance with that. So, there'll be no more, I forgot, doesn't matter. You will be penalized for not registering your dog.
Does that go for dogs that are just inside all the time, too?
It doesn't matter. It's a dog.
Okay, just asking.
We didn't specify.
If it's at the residence, it has to be.
Yeah.
Just asking. I don't have any dogs, so just asking.
Check her house.
I ain't checking anybody's place. I'm just telling you, it's the right thing to do. Register your dog. Uh, then we actually had a nice meeting with Mr. Bascom from over on Lamprey Drive. He acquired all the land off Lamprey Drive, off Lamprey Road, you know. And one of the questions that he came up to us, again, I mentioned this the last meeting, was the new acquired road is, was acquired in the condition as it's in. So, what he was asking for the board is if that's for future clarification, you know, if he ever plans to subdivide, which might happen, but again, I'm not speaking for the applicant, I'm not speaking for him. That's his, when he wants to come in front. But he was asking the board about making the road twenty-five feet wide as, not like actually make it a twenty-five-feet wide, but making the boundaries twenty-five feet wide. So, that would meet a new subdivisions regulations. So, if he ever did subdivide, at least we know the town owns or has the right of twenty-five feet.
From the center line or is he saying the total width?
Total width. But that's better than where now some are only fourteen feet, some may be eighteen feet. So, if the, if the town ever needed.
You're talking the traveled surface, correct?
Right.
Not lot line to lot line. You're saying.
Lot line to lot line, yeah, whatever you wanna say. He's not gonna purposely make the road. Let's go back and I'll make this a little more clear before you overthink.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
The road is the way it is. Accepted the way it is and that's it. It's the way it is.
One lane travel, sometimes it's not.
Exactly.
Yep.
But he is trying to think ahead for with the town by saying that when he, 'cause it's all one big lot. If he was to subdivide those lots.
Yep.
He wanted to make it so the fact that the road would be twenty-five feet wide if the town ever wanted to increase the size to make it a full twenty-five feet. He's not gonna go do it and start cutting down trees and make it a twenty-five-foot road 'cause it's a road that's been accepted as the way it sits. I just thought it was a nice gesture on his part for future planning for the town so that there is a chance, but when that comes, that will come.
Is he gifting the town?
Kind of, yeah.
Twenty-five feet on either side and he's gonna change all the deeds and have it all surveyed and everything?
It's all one big, yeah, he's gonna have it all surveyed when he does it, but that's when he comes in front of planning. This is what he was asking the board, the select board. Again, I'm just trying to be, it was, it's more simple than, well, yeah. We haven't got to the complexity of.
Okay.
Where he's getting to the fact of subdividing or doing anything like that.
The discussion.
Exactly.
Okay.
On the interpretation of, you know, what a road size should be.
So, any, any?
So, the minutes are all there. You can actually watch the video on YouTube or us having the conversation if you want to go on.
They can go back to and look at how this board has acted upon any applications coming before, before the board for a subdivision on a road that is not up to current standards, even if it's a town road.
The town road doesn't, we don't have standards for roads.
The planning board does.
For new, for new roads, not roads that are of existence.
And based on a subdivision that comes before the board, there can be offset exactions, there can be a bunch of other stuff that gets applied. But what I'm getting at is there's been several cases in the past that, and there's different ways to do it, where an applicant has come before the board on a road where the boundary line may not be clear or the, or the width of the road isn't at a certain point and they've set the line either wider so that it would allow for possible improvement of that road in the future.
Correct.
Or another option is easement, again, setting a line, creating an easement or offering easement to the town.
Correct.
I think that is in our subdivision regs or our zoning somewhere. Yeah, let's go back and find the exact section.
Yeah.
That's things to consider, but again, there's plenty of a couple of recent cases that.
I think he was more, he was more for the fact of future expansion. He wanted to have, make sure that the town had, you know, you had a legal easement or right to make the road wider if necessary. If a tree falls, clear out the tree, make the thing wider in that spot or whatever for future. It was a nice gesture. And I think it's something to consider when he comes in front. You know, 'cause we actually sent it out to legal, too, just to get interpretation because of that warrant article that was written was so vague.
As is.
As is, is towards what that might actually mean, so.
Yeah, well, that's the interesting part, too. The as is, I think was.
But the reason why he's not coming in front of you, 'cause he ain't doing any subdivision, he ain't doing nothing. He's just talking about a, a road and that still falls under the board of selectionment.
Correct.
On the road until it actually becomes a subdivision or something, then, then this board will be involved with that endeavor of what we ask them to do to increase whatever, right, exactly.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say to that is that, you know, if he's listening to this meeting, I'm sure everybody watches our meetings, but.
Oh, sure.
Is just, it kinda, the only, this has come up in discussion in the past because of Article nineteen, the past years ago, is that really the only thing we're gonna have to go off of when I think right-of-way with, which is lot line to lot line or it could be an easement as well, that is for, for the purpose of a traveled way, which could be, you know, we go as low as eighteen feet wide on some of our lowest traveled roads, you know, twenty feet if it's paved, um, is, in subdivision regulations, Article fifteen, uh, fifteen point one, number two, is right-of-ways, and this is just the important part. It highlights numbers, which we have something to go off of. It's no street or highway right-of-way shall be less than fifty feet in width except when topography or physical conditions make additional development in the future unlikely, in which case the minimum right-of-way shall be thirty-six feet. So, I think we've discussed in the past, we have maybe unique road situations that were private, now they've been absorbed, it may not be a record plan. I mean, a lot of them, it's dirt roads through property and then now the town has rights to it, but no defined corridor. We're looking at that thirty-six to fifty feet, whether that's easement or property that's granted to the town at some point. And then within that thirty-six to fifty feet is the actual traveled way, which, again, in its existing condition varies greatly. Probably five, six times over the course of some of these roads that width will change based on if there's cars under it or not, so.
Or trees.
Right, so, that's, in terms of like from the planning board's perspective when we see an application, that a surveyor, I know there's a question, surveyor will end up having to make a determination and I think that's where town administrator, I know has information on this, is the determination from legal counsel at one time after Article nineteen passed was the town has rights to where the road is currently, plus if there are record plans that show a dedicated right-of-way or easement, that now the town zours by nature of absorbing that road, they also have rights to that. So, that could be, the road is sitting here, but the actual right-of-way was supposed to curve out. The town technically has rights to both. I don't think we want it. We don't want more responsibility than we need. But that's unfortunately something that applicants, if it comes to that, if they encounter that, it's just gonna be more back and forth.
We might not see this for five years anyway, so it doesn't, whatever.
We, we know something, we knew it's gonna happen at some point.
Well, he already came in, he already came in front of this board anyways for a conceptual.
'Cause you can't worm you open.
I look for, I look forward to that. Those will be the interesting ones.
Second, the, we had a nice discussion Monday night. We had a workshop to go over a recycling center. Uh, to go over policies and terms because it's been quite a few years since that's been actually looked at. I think it was two thousand seven, maybe. So, it's been a good fifteen years. You know, 'cause there was things in there, you know, whether now we don't use transparent bags. You can use regular black bags to throw in, which is causing some problems, but those causing problems the other way, so. Either way, it's gonna be a problem. Uh, the building condition, uh, the compactors. Uh, one is so old that there's nothing there. It's still working, but you know, that's a thing that's gonna need to be replaced. The cost factor of what happens with that, the recycling of the cans, the layout of how the, um, the cars come in and out, you know, with the fact of parking over here, having to cross past the traveled way in order to get to the building. You know, as people are unloading, if people aren't paying attention, could that be a possible accident waiting to happen? Good thing people drive slow and it hasn't happened. Uh, new signage, um, and, uh, cost factor. Uh, my big thing, and I'll say it again, I said it to the public, I'll say it again. I was, um, for and a small fee to be put on to the residents, uh, you know, like fifty dollars a year, like when you get a tag in order to try to cut some of the cost of the three hundred thousand dollars it costs to run the dump. Last year was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars after revenues. You know, you think about the whole police department, it's only six hundred dollars to run that and we have more employees and, you know, cars and more traffic and everything over there, but the dump is just getting out of control for fees and the fact that we have a four percent budget cap. If we don't find ways to make more revenue, services are gonna get cut. That means they're gonna get cut everywhere. This board's gonna get cut. Everything could possibly be on chopping block for where we have to save money. Last year, we had to move a hundred thousand dollars out of the highway uh, and put it into a warrant article to add it on from three hundred to four hundred thousand in hope that it would pass because things cost too much money. So, as people were opposed to it, well, it didn't get passed, it was discussion. When we do get to that full discussion, it will be a full public meeting if we get to that point, if it ever, you know, if the rest of the board agrees with me, which I don't think they do, but.
Have you left an impact fees?
I was gonna say, I hate bringing that word up, but in the end, it's, it's a.
It's a valid.
That's another, that's another way of things to do, yeah, if, if we can. Um, because it is part of the structure, you know, of the growing town and the required.
Correct.
So, but you have, yeah, that has to be, the fees have to be spent on new things, so.
Correct.
You know, could we use that for the new compactor? Even though we're replacing an old compactor?
Well, I think it goes more to, I know there's been.
We have to create a new impact fee.
Well, I think there's, well, I mean, we're gonna have an R, hopefully put an RFP out for impact fees. It's probably the next, the next budget cycle, but I do think, you know, the CIP this year, I think we're all seeing the pinch on the budget. Well, unfortunately, impact fees are gonna, we're gonna rely on those a little bit more.
Sure.
So, now you can have an impact fee, uh, kind of earmarked for something if it's on, say, a CIP, and I know there's been discussion about uh, the, the police departments looking at options, whether it's five, ten years out. But like, that's the kind of stuff that if it's planned for, you can start to collect fees if you have an impact fee for it, so. I don't wanna have eight impact fees, but unfortunately, if our existing tax base can't provide for it, we're gonna rely on incre, the, the new population to help subsidize it, yeah. It's not a deal, but.
No, but it's, it's still comes, that comes to revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have enough revenue, revenue to support everything that people are gonna want.
Well, the short term is something like that.
About a decade plus ago, we had a recycling subcommittee of the select board, myself, Kathy Senfo, Dee Decker, Robert, I think was, were in it, I don't know if he was part of it, I can't remember. Then maybe a couple of other people, and I apologize to anybody that can't, can't remember. A while ago, but I know, you know, a fee, I mean, that's when the stickers came out to try to limit, 'cause one of the big things was people from out of town coming, especially contractors and dumping for very cheap, cheap rates. So, it's trying to control some of that, the clear bags. And then also, I think that's where, at the time, there was still more revenue we had from recycled materials. So, that's when we got like the trailers, I think, to be able to send truckloads at a time as opposed to smaller quantities so you get more, more revenue that way. It's been a while.
Those rates have been tanking.
Some of those discussion points were then, are still now, so.
One of the other things you're gonna wanna consider with the recycling center, too, is, and this was brought up at SRPC, is the waste from things like solar panels that there's still no plan for what to do with those, so the recycling center might wanna.
This goes to general landfill at this point, it hazards waste.
E-waste, so.
Yeah, e-waste.
I think the other thing with the recycle center, too, is just there can be some, and you can get grant, grant funds for this, I've seen it, is education on how to reduce waste in your household. You reduce waste in your household, there's less you have to throw away.
Yeah.
Especially, you know, food scraps.
Yeah.
That's probably the biggest weight factor.
There's been grants to communities in the past. I think it's been done in this community before, like bulk purchases of bins or compost bins, compost tumblers, things like that. In fact, right, can be looked at. Again, the parking, the flow, that was the other big thing Elena mentioned. That was brought up in the past, was other towns, you know, to drive straight through kind of things, you're not backing out and, and that kind of thing, so. Maybe the town could do that with, the labor side may offset it of pull up and there's six different bins or how many of our bins we have for recycling right next to the cars. You dump them in those and then someone from, an employee moves them with the front loader.
So, it's called the time here. To keep it effective and useful, the simplicity of the thing has to be there. The more complex we make it, the less that it's going to be viable for people. Or, and then it's to where you say the point of, well, we're gonna have more rules to what you have to do at the recycling center. Well, then we all read on Facebook about when somebody tries to tell somebody the rules and the person doesn't wanna hear the rules or obey the rules, then we have issues. And those issues because of Facebook get blown out of proportion. But so, there's a, there's a level of.
You reduce your recycling, too. If you put more burden, people are like, I'm just throwing it in the trash. I can throw the bag in the compactor, then you, it just created.
Again, the, the thing is that there's two sides to every situation that you look on there. You know, and it's, you know, how do we keep it the way that it is? You know, it's kind of working, but it's not working. You know, it's, again, a simple way, it was the only thing, was why I was proposing was the cash flow, was that we got to bring it down, increase the budget and maybe we'd have extra money that we could put towards repairing the building, fixing this, getting this, but.
I think your solution.
If we, if the problem is if we stay the way we are.
It's only gonna up.
Right.
Then. If it's gonna go, it's gonna increase more on the budget, it's gonna increase more and we're no better today if we don't do anything than we will be next year or the year after. It's just the problem's gonna get worse.
Then we'll be in a worse situation if we don't do anything.
So, again, when people don't realize that there, there has to be some transition or change. You know, and what's the simplest way to do it with the minimum amount of effective people? And again, my suggestion, and I'll put it out there, was a fee. Maybe if you're over sixty-five, you don't pay the fee. It's nice to be, 'cause you know, people in the older, they don't pay. But again, that way money came in. That was a simple solution. There's been other solutions, adding another machine, adding another thing, tell people to go over here. If they wanna recycle, they could throw it in here and we'll just charge them with the credit card machine. So, that ain't gonna go over good, 'cause people are gonna be like, screw that. So.
It's a good point, because your, your.
We were only having another meeting because at last, we didn't get out of there till ten o'clock at night and we started at seven. So, and I don't think we accomplished everything we needed to because of the situation that it was.
Well, have you, have you, did you discuss maybe having another recycling committee and seeing if there's folks that are interested in looking at it?
You know, I mean, that can be proposed. Uh, you know, but.
I think it'd be great if, if we as a town, at a, and maybe every town, had a better way of proactively communicating to all residents. Besides, mailers cost quite a bit of money to do, so.
Of course it does.
List serve, contact, that kind of thing, where if people decide to sign up, they can get emails from the town. 'Cause I think this is a good point, this update's about recycling, the cost to do it, you know, again. We talked about, I think our slogan that came out of it was, you know. The cost to do it, you know, again, uh we talked about, I think our slogan that came out of it was, you know. Save green while being green, so recycling, not just from the standpoint of like, you know, it's the right thing to do, it was, it actually saves the town quite a bit of money in that it's. Not going as a tipping fee of, you know, going to landfill and paying a hundred dollars a ton to do that. You know, it's potentially offsetting getting some some revenue or albeit.
Another suggestion I made on there was making our signage. You know, as when you leave, thank you for recycling Nottingham, appreciate that you're doing there, and have some things that are positive in there. And basically guilt the people that are not doing it as they go in there, to feel guilty about not.
If you're only putting trash bags in, you're the most expensive person in that.
Or I think, I think it was a sign that was like.
To politely, to politely guilt people into dang, I probably should have recycled that, I probably should have did that, so that next time they come, they do it better.
Yeah, it was showing, just showing, making it very clear how much revenue has been generated by recycling with that calendar year.
It's not much, because when you, when you cost to get it all the way, the the revenue we made was seventy-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But we spent three hundred and thirty? Well, I don't know if recycling's really a a winner for, I mean, good, it helped us, so instead of a four hundred thousand dollar bill, we had a three thirty bill.
No, instead of a five hundred thousand dollar bill.
And was most of that solid waste?
Oh, yeah, that.
It goes back to educating people on how to reduce waste in your household.
But if it's seventy-three thousand dollars in revenue that we made, after tipping, after the cost of of transporting it. The price per ton of disposing of that is over a hundred dollars, so never mind that you not, you have got.
Yeah.
Not that seventy-three thousand dollars you would have paid to dispose of it, to get, so it's it's more like a hundred fifty thousand.
Doubling another way, yeah.
Switch, but I think that, same thing with like, you know, septic and wells and just education, especially as we get new people that move into town that may not be familiar with. You know, taking care of those things, um but again, that's for another day.
So thank you for uh, thank you for tackling a lot of that stuff.
I give you did, I think if you did a per bag, it would be better than what people would recycle.
Sure, but then I mean, but then, I mean, we have to, like right now, we only have three employees on Saturday, if somebody's not sick. And then two employees, that's not enough people to to do that, ask that task to be there, for people to come in. And then you have people that come in, oh, I don't have my wallet on me, I didn't take it with me, I don't have this on me, are you gonna tell those people they gotta go away?
Well, the per bag thing, are you saying the pre-buy bags?
Either do it pre-buy bags, or you do it in, you know, it 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 would cost money to do it, you have um. You have barcode, you sell stickers, put sticker on your bag, goes up to the barcode, it opens up the door, boom, you have an account. It automatically gets charged to your account.
Hopefully that machine doesn't cost a lot.
No, I think that, I think that.
They do it in Maine with recycling.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why you see like, a lot of the communities.
If you have that, if that information wants to be sent to the board, I mean, please, I mean, there's so much out there. And I mean, we have a lot on our plate looking at this, you know, but if you guys have the free time to send ideas, I mean, that's what we're looking for, ideas.
I think that.
The more people give ideas, the more that we can probably generally make a better path for what we need to do. To make sure that the the recycling center stays, you know, open to the fact of, you know, doing what we've been trying to do for thirty, forty years or whatever. You know, they're, right, you know, cause no one wants to see it go away, but again, no one wants to see their taxes go higher either, so.
One of the problems with, I see with the bag thing, is if you've got somebody like we have, where. My son-in-law picks up our trash, which is usually in my bag, and then for his house and my dad and my sister-in-law. All of that checking in would not be, would be being charged to pull.
Well, you know, you'd have your own sticker that you put on your own bag, and you'd have your own account.
So there's, there's, I have seen, I've seen systems that.
This is why our discussion went till ten o'clock at night, as you see where it's going right now.
So that's why, that's why you see communities like.
You started it with a road.
That that lasts not as long as this discussion, so what the heck?
Well, that's why communities like Newmarket did it, because they, Newmarket offers public trash, um. And so the reason they did some of that is because they also, they also saw a skyrocketing cost, so it helped them offset that, but they also then saw.
Town Vepi charges twenty bucks for it to use their dump.
Right.
All the residents, if you wanna use the dump there, you gotta pay a twenty dollar fee to use the dump.
Right, and that's, it's usually pretty nominal if you look at it over the course of a year, but like Newmarket does it.
But we could do twenty-five, you know, I'm saying, but our next door neighbors are doing it.
And there's a number of communities that do it, but like, for example, Newmarket, that's why she orange bags all over the place, is cause you go to the store, you buy them. And the whole idea is that it's, it they've seen a reduction in landfill waste, cause people are like, well, I'm not gonna.
Sure.
Fill that third bag, I'm gonna make two bags work, they were doing three, you have half the town decrease their bags. They're decreasing impact to the landfill, the town saves money on trucking, time, employees, and so.
But again, they were like, a lot of things, paper.
It's hard.
Again, we're gonna end this really quick, cause we've gone on all night about this, paper makes no money for the town, nothing.
No.
Absolutely nothing, I think we lose money by people recycling paper, recycling the glass, which is great, nothing, no money made. Not worth anything.
That's terrible.
So it's just not worth anything to anybody.
I know, but we've been doing this for years.
Sure, not worth anything.
We can crush it and use it as road base.
Yeah, that's whoa whoa.
Town in New London does that.
In glass is very.
That ain't gonna happen.
So keeping it out of.
Yeah.
Solid waste side is a is a huge benefit, just from that, a lot of, it it saves from that.
Recycling the novelty is absolutely wonderful, and I believe in it, but.
We do too, like I said, we've been doing it for years.
There's still savings, but it's not the cash cow that maybe it was.
Well, in the order to say, you know, when you read the thing of the article, one of the last lines was, uh when it was written back in the day, was. The lucrative cash that the town requires.
One time there was.
I was like, oh, yeah, that's kind of uh.
Not relevant.
But really, as far as the saving the earth, all this green stuff, though, when you hear about this with recycling. Makes me as nuts as the fact that you can't do anything with the solar panels, it's like. We're talking, we seem to talk out both sides of our mouth when we mention doing anything for the planet, because it's not there, we're not doing it.
Like window blades, those get buried when they're done.
Exactly, so how is that helping the planet? It isn't. It's just, it's nuts, sorry.
Okay, so that's good enough for me.
Thanks for putting us all in a good mood.
Sign up for my seat whenever.
No, thank you, I would never, you couldn't pay me in.
Oh, um, the only thing I wanna say is, I will not be able to be here on the twelfth, but I am going to make things work and try and be here on the twenty-sixth.
Is that the next month, the twenty-sixth?
The twelfth and twenty-sixth, I won't be here the twelfth, I can't be.
A design review, right?
Yeah.
And a case.
The other two cases are going to be continued, um one you have to vote on.
Business park requested a continuance, right?
Right, so you, yeah, so you just have to vote on that and then those other two will go.
We could, we could put that, we could post that, we'll put that note on the agenda, that that applicant's request a continuation.
Yes, I saw that.
So we'll put that on the the agenda that goes out, that way, if anybody's interested in a specific case, cause we get that happens quite a bit, where we continue something to a specific date, like tonight.
People show up.
So people may show up, because it's on the agenda, it's a date and time certain that we continue to, um but it's um. We can't continue something except at the public hearing, so, cause it's date and time certain that we continue to, so we have to, on that date. Hold the public hearing and then continue the case. But I think the workaround on that is that we can, if we do receive something from applicant, saying that they're not gonna be here, if they wanna be continuing to a specific date in the future. We can let them know, we will consider that, it's not definite.
Right.
And that we can put it on the agenda, that publishes that applicant's request of the continuance to a future date, the board will be considering that request. In addition to the case, so. It's, yeah, there's nothing that ever says that we have to accept an applicant's request to continue, we generally do, cause there's generally no harm. So we'll look, if that meeting looks like it's gonna be open, we'll look at um. Especially adding some stuff to it, if there's things that are value added to the board.
I'm all set.
Uh I'll just um share that I sent a email to. The um select board and the town administrator, right now, there's um ten million dollars. Um that the state DOT has, um or EPA or something like that. Um but anyways, there's ten million dollars of available to municipalities to convert diesel trucks. And buses and other um kinda point authority kinda stuff. Um and um it's pretty good, um it, there are. Qualifications to the age of the truck and the class of the truck, but um you can, it will cover eighty percent of the cost of. An EV truck, um and I think you have three years to implement it, so.
Converting to what?
Converting to uh electric vehicles, um so I I sent that to the board. In case they wanna look at it now that they're getting into, or will soon be getting into budget cycle.
So is that saying like if we had an old?
If we had like an old highway department truck.
Yeah.
Right, and we wanted to, and it's, you know, it's in the queue to get, you know. A new one to get replaced in the next couple of years, it could be an EV one.
Yeah, so if it's a two hundred thousand dollar truck, they'd pay one sixty.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know of any electric trucks that can plow roads, that's the only thing, yeah.
Well, it could be police officers' vehicle, I mean.
Well, that's not, that's what I was curious, does it have to be like, if you take a highway department vehicle, you gotta replace that vehicle?
Yeah, no, this, it has to be diesel, and so it can be, there's certain classes of trucks and. Yeah, and a certain, certain um buses, like school buses. But I don't think the town, the town does own school buses, right?
Sometimes they do, but I'm not sure about Nottingham.
Even though they say Nottingham, they're contracted buses.
I think they're contracted, I'm not a school board.
I think they're, yeah, I think, but anyways, something to.
Unfortunately, I think you're gonna see a lot of the larger cities taking advantage of that, just because of they have more of a fleet to be able to shift things around.
Yeah.
But it's always good to.
No, I read that, thank you, that was good, actually, I I what you meant, I did read that, that you sent that, I was trying to think of what we had for that, that could be done.
Uh so just to get a couple of data on uh this, we started, but we had our annual meeting. Uh we had a really good attendance in Russia here, I don't think there's any seats left, um. They did a panel of speakers talking about uh rooftop, you know, roofbelted and ground mounted solar systems. Um this gentleman there from Department of Energy, um. President of City Rochester, and a woman that works for a private consulting firm, who works with a lot of private investors, contractors. That do that sort of thing, um so it was a really interesting group, um especially having a woman that represents a lot of private sector people to get their perspective on it. Um but they were talking about um some of the, you know, Rochester put in place. Um zoning regulations, um and just talking about what was important there. Um and then, you know, the Department of Energy guy was talking about some of the grants that are out there, some of the programs that are out there. Um. One of the things that I, one of the touches that I asked is about where you might see, begin to see overlap, like for example, agriculture, um you're doing. Um, you know, covering certain fields with um ground mounted, ground mounted solar. Um parking lots you're seeing, people retrofit their parking lots, they have ground mounted solar, uh which serves as nice carports. Um because. I I saw this when I worked on the Cape, people just clearing land to put in.
You don't have to.
It's the state of Maine right now.
It's, so yeah, it's insane.
If every Walmart would convert their parking lots into, I forget how much that would impact.
No, but you're saying that they're trying to offset people clearing regular land to put in ground mounted solar.
Forests.
Which is kind of the Natrix effect.
Well, that's what, that is what's happening in Maine right now, they're the fastest growing like solar state in the country right now, so.
Because of all the taxes, and 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 the, you know, the the need for that sort of like high demand times and. Um one of the things you're also seeing, you know, Tesla being an example, is the increase of like commercial grade, commercial sized batteries. For storage, so that you can then release it back at a time that's that's needed. So if you pull it in at a lower demand time, but then wanna store it and then release it at a high demand time, your payback becomes significantly higher, because the. Utilities pay you more to release it at that proper time.
There's a, there's commercial endeavors now that people just focus on locating battery banks in municipal areas, and it's uh. It's also, there's a nice weird market of energy credits, which is like a black hole trying to understand energy credits. But for tax purposes, you can buy and sell energy credits for renewables and it benefits corporations. Hey, people make a lot of money that know how it works, and it's extremely complicated, but.
It's the same with like affordable housing tax credits, if you can figure it out, there's money to be made out there.
Yeah.
So it's interesting, and then Patricia brought up a whole times, you know, one of these, you know, they have an end of life cycle between twenty and thirty years, so. Um, you know, what what happens with them? Um and that, you're just seeing, you're seeing new materials, they're starting to roll it out of the sheet, so it's like paper thin, um. It's gonna last longer, some companies are toying with rooftop shingles. But that's all just, that was sort of outside of the scope of the conversation, the conversation was more focused on the municipal side. Um the public sector side, like how to deal with the the regular waste here, but it was a fun conversation, it was very interesting.
Cool.
Anything else for us?
There is um another case that I am gonna be sending out for the July twelfth. Um a business, so it's kind of.
A site plan, site plan or change of views?
Uh site plan, and it's somebody who's basically just trying to bring. Wood onto his property to be sold later, so it's.
Processing or something.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Yeah, if you haven't, if you need guidance on it. Not good, if you haven't got forwarded to Blair yet for kind of review or input, you may be able to give some guidance on which way to guide the.
Is it best for me to, so when I get, I have the application, is it best for me to send it to you first, before I send it out to everybody?
Yes, if it's, if it's something like this, where you're really not sure.
It's not clear cut, yeah.
Yeah, what to make of it, but if it's a subdivision, if you've kind of seen it, I've looked at it before, you know, again, this is a pretty standard application, send it out. Um, I mean, the confusion of this one may just be how to regulate it, but if it's from an application standpoint, where, you know. What else would you ask them to do besides a site plan review, so.
I guess if if people come in and like, they're asking questions and and.
Oh, yeah, if that's the case, then that's, yes.
You know, obviously, you know, you can guide as much as possible, you know, and then Blair can provide some guides or connect them with Blair. To see, it's like, okay, well, this may be, this may, you might run to this section or this section or this section. So there's that additional resource of SRPC and Blair.
Yeah, if it's pre-application, absolutely, that's what we're talking about, so.
But once the application's in.
This one has drawn, pan drawn. So I know you're saying that we have to decide about something else, but I don't.
Really depends, we, we get on case by case.
Yeah.
I think we solved that last time.
Yeah.
I've had it to deal with it.
Anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, and second by Mrs. Bascom to adjourn, all's paper.
Aye.
Aye.